First appointment, 6:30, joint meeting with the planning board. Welcome, planning board.
Hello, can you see us?
No.
Hear us? Okay, very good, this is gonna work then.
Okay, the first thing I need to do is call the the meeting of the planning board, and I need to take a roll call. Margaret Sweetie? Here. John Souza?
Present.
Steve Mello? Steve Taylor?
I'm here.
Kevin Mello?
Present.
Lori Miller, we're all present, we have a quorum, we can continue the meeting. Okay, Stanley, go ahead.
Oh, I guess it's a, this is your joint meeting, you're gonna you're gonna go over the articles for Springtown meeting, Warren?
Yes, correct. So we have Article A, which is the Aquafer Protection Overlay District Article, and basically, this article was sponsored by the Planning Board at the request of Dave Hickox, the Director of Department of Public Works, per the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. DPW had applied for a a review of the, a technical review of the Dartmouth Department of Works Water Management Act Permit Amendment Application. So this came from that, and one of the requirements was of that particular review was to update the the Aquafer Protection Overlay District map. So I am going to show you the map. Can you all see it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Peter and I from DCTV have been working on this all day today, 'cause I'm a little slow here, get, making sure I understand it. But basically, a few of the wells in the Violetta portion, which I'm gonna take my icon to over in this area, had to be adjusted slightly. So as a result, we kinda went through the entire map, made sure that everything was correct, that it matched the that it matched the bylaw. And then in doing that, we also went through to make, in order to change the map, we have to change the reference to the map within within the overlay district, and basically, so then we went through the entire district and just made sure that everything had the correct information on it, there were some references to things like the Board of Health and think in Wetlands Conservation Commission, some of those items needed to be changed and updated, because certain things had been right, worked with Mike O'Reilly, Chris Masu, everybody reviewed it in great detail. And that, so the changes that we're proposing come about as a result of that. So that's the first one. Does anyone have any questions? The second thing is the I'm sorry, Peter, I might need a little help, how do I, do I go back to just? Peter, can you hear me? Oh, stop share, there we go. Okay, so the second one is Article B, and that's got to do with the floodplain the floodplain overlay district, and this again is a map requirement, and that comes about as a result of some guidance that the Select Board has received from FEMA and from the Department of Conservation and Recreation, Mass CR C E R, I'm sorry, C D C R. So we needed to update the, we've gotten some new panels for Dartmouth, some new, some changes to the overlay protection district. Basically, some properties had been kinda taken out of the district, which is good. Peter's got the me, the map up here for you. There aren't many major changes to it, it's more just, again, it's something that we're required to do. Nope, this is the wrong map. I'm sorry. Let's see here. So again, this was brought on by FEMA, and we needed to make changes, as a result of making those changes, we needed to we made some minor revisions to the bylaw, in addition to the actual map change which has to occur. There, as you can see over to the left-hand side of the map, there are a number of references to panels, so basically, the town is divided into various panels, and some of the panels have been changed in 2020. This is important, like the first one, in that they have to be approved at town meetings prior to July, in order, in this particular case, it's so that you can stay within the National Flood Plan Protection Insurance Program. So we need to have, we need to have this done, this is a requirement, FEMA did send a follow-up letter last week saying that they still expect every city and town to go forward with revisions. Again, it doesn't change any overall thing. The changes to the actual bylaw are just to clean it up, because there are a number of there were some times in the past when either the map had been updated, or the bylaw had been updated, but they didn't all work together. Again, I brought this before the various department heads, and the the fire chiefs in this particular case, so everybody reviewed, reviewed it from from their department standpoints when we put it all together. This one has also been approved by DCR. They have gone back and reviewed our whole bylaw to make sure that we weren't missing anything with requirements even from our old bylaw, so any changes that come about are the result of that one. Okay, the next, the next change is Article C, and Article C is just changes to the the signs article of the bylaw. These are just minor things, the bylaw was last approved, last updated in 2018. There were some typographical errors and grammatical errors, those type of things that had, had happened, so we thought that this was a good opportunity to bring this one forward, these are again, just very minor revisions, does not change the the intent of the bylaw in any way. Article D is the citizens petition, and that is a change. We have a citizens petition for a request to change one lot, map 56 Lot 6, from single residence B to general residence. The applicants will be putting a presentation on this evening, or will be discussing it in great detail with the Planning Board later. Basically, the, the piece of this one that is kind of interesting is that if you look at the, the existing zoning map, the one parcel that they want to change to general business abuts the general business district, so that is why, one of the reasons why this particular thing works, it's kind of, the parcel in particular is in between State Road and 195. It's not very easily accessible. They do have a proposal that they will ultimately like to go forward, if this gets approved. I don't know if there's anything else, anybody has any questions with regard to that?
Mr. Tatabon?
Question. The first three articles, would you really consider them to be basically housekeeping issues?
Well, the first, the first two are of the utmost importance, if you don't do them, you're gonna have problems with your state federal.
Housekeeping in the sense, in the sense that, excuse me, in the sense that we're just following the rules, and it's just cleaning up issues that really have to be done?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
First three.
Yep, so, and they're all brought by the, by the Planning Board.
Right. Okay.
The next one, like I said, is the Select Board, and then the last one is your particular Article E. And that's being sponsored by the Select Board, and that's for the, would change the marijuana district, would change the name of the marijuana district, and will allow for cultivation and manufacturing within the general business district, and obviously, you all know
Are you with support of it?
That.
Is the Planning Board in support?
Well, the Planning Board will be discussing it tonight at their public hearing. They had, in the, in the past, they had, at the last town meeting, where they had brought forward something with regard to this, so unless there is a major change, but I do have to say, we have two members that did not sit the last time, that might be able to sit this time on it. So I don't know exactly how they're gonna go on it, I mean, in concept, the, the members that voted the last time were in favor of it.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Mr. Tarrin? Mr. Gracie?
No.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
No, everything's good, thank you. Good luck with tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Can we just ask?
Thank you.
A question of the Planning Board, so Christine, so as we prepare the warrant, and in light of the emergency order that's in place, Greg Barnes and I have been working on kind of paring down the warrant for the Springtown meeting. I just had a question on this, the signs articles, is that something that needs to go forward in the spring, like the first two articles, or could that wait till the fall town meeting, if it was necessary?
That could wait, that's already waited a couple of town meetings. Again, that's, those issues were from before I was hired by the town even, so we could pull that one if we decide we want to.
Okay.
But A and B will go forward?
A and B have to go forward, or you have major issues.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, great.
John, question, what's your rationale to maybe postponing Article C?
No, no rationale, other than, like I said, we don't know what's gonna happen with town meeting. So it, you know, if it get to a point where it was sort of an emergency town meeting, or, you know, we're kind of watching the governor in this state of emergency, there's a bill in place that allows for an extension of a town meeting for 30 days, if there's a state of emergency. There's also some other options where the moderator can continue the town meeting, so we just don't know what attendance would be like, so we, you know, the, the things that are musts, we wanna have on a warrant, but we're still, you know, we're playing it by ear, and moving forward with the original warrant schedule, but any articles that could be pushed back to the fall, we'd like to do that.
The timeframe, just to clarify, for the Article B for the floodplain, it has to be adopted prior to July 8.
Is there any way we can look into why they're saying July 8, and they won't re, you know, give us the ability to go further than July 8, if town meetings have a problem? I think they would be understanding, I don't understand why a letter went out a couple of weeks ago stating that they were adhering to that July 8 deadline.
So the, the letter that I received from FEMA was sent to the Select Board, and we were copied on it. It just says, "I commend you for your efforts that you've put forth in implementing the floodplain management measures for the town of Dartmouth, Massachusetts, to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. As you implement these measures, I want to emphasize the following." The FIS, which is the Flood Insurance Study and the Flood Insurance Rate Map Firm, will become effective on July 8, 2020. It goes on to say, you know, "If you encounter major difficulties, you can let us know, but otherwise, we anticipate that you, we expect you to go forward with it." Obviously, I'm paraphrasing, but you know, I don't know if there's some other way we could do it under emergency meeting, but basically, what this flood insurance program means is anybody who's got a mortgage who has to carry flood insurance, they have to be in this program, if they're not in the program, you know, they're a dyke.
I can't see any reason why we can't just go forward with it, why can't we just make sure we do it?
Well, I guess the only concern would be is if something happens with town meeting, but, I mean, so we can reach out to them if there's a major thing, I wouldn't cancel I wouldn't cancel town meeting, you know, unless we're directed to cancel it, I would just move forward, even if it is just with those first two articles, and nothing else, to be honest with you.
Does the Select Board have any other questions of the Planning Board?
I don't believe so, Ms. Miller. No, so, thank you very much for coming. Enjoy your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Select, the Planning Board is back into full meetings, and we have a full quorum, is, well, is John on?
Yes.
Did we lose John? John, you're here? Okay, we have a, we have a full quorum. Steven, you wanted to say something before we started?
No, I don't care if it's before we started or later, but I would like to comment on, if town meeting can't happen in person, that doesn't mean it can't happen well enough to vote to deal with the flood insurance problem, and the state certainly knows that, we shouldn't kid ourselves, if we have to have a postponed town meeting, but we still need to get these people under the July 8 line, that can be done, that's a simple matter of administrivia, but it can be done.
Right.
Right. Okay, I need the, I need a vote to go into public hearing for the zoning articles for Springtown warrant.
So moved.
Back in.
Steven moved, and Kevin seconded, roll call vote, Margaret?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Lori Miller, yes, the vote is unanimous, we are in a public hearing mode for the town meeting warrant. The first one on the agenda is amendment to the zoning map and zoning bylaw relative to the Aquafer Protection. Christine?
Okay, I'm gonna put the map up, and I'll talk at that point, I do see that there are a number of other people who have signed into the meeting, so if anybody has a question when the actual, when it's open for the public discussion, if you just let us know at the bottom of your screen, then we'll give you an opportunity, we'll open up your microphones and you can speak. There is somebody from DCTV that's kind of overseeing all of this, so as long as you give me a little notification, we were initially gonna try to do chat, but we think it will be a little bit difficult to, to texture questions, but we will take any, any any, any comments that anyone has.
Yep, so under the "more" section is a raise hand feature, and that would probably be how you could find it, just hit the raise hand feature.
Does everybody see that, then, I guess, I hope?
Board members wouldn't see it, because you guys are co-hosts, it would only be people from the public.
Okay, okay, very good. All right, I'm gonna put up the first map, and then we'll go from there. Sorry. User error on my part, yeah, hold on. Okay, so this first thing, as I had said before, is Article A, and it's to see if the town will vote to amend Section 375-28 of the zoning bylaw dealing with Aquafer Protection within the Aquafer Protection Districts, and by replacing the Aquafer Protection Districts map as approved at the June 4, 2013 town meeting, with the Dartmouth Aquafer Protection Overlay District map. This warrant article would, would be an update of Section 28 of the zoning bylaw, and would do a comprehensive revision of the, to meet current regulations and terminology. This article is being sponsored by the Planning Board at the request of David Hickox, Director of the Department of Public Works. And this comes about as a result of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection review of the town of Dartmouth. They had submitted a letter to us indicating that they had completed a technical review of the DPW Waterman, Water Management Act Permit Amendment Application, and the order was, one of the items of that order was the completion of an update of the Aquafer Protection map. So the map here is available on the it is available on the town website, if people can zoom in, I have it in one place for the Planning Board members, but I will put it up there for everybody else to read, it will also be in all town meeting, more in article materials, and it'll be on the Planning, the Planning Board website. So basically, what we want to do is we want to delete the first section of 284A in its entirety, and replace it with the boundaries of the Aquafer Protection Overlay District and zones therein are shown on a separate page of, of the Dartmouth zoning map. That is labeled Dartmouth Aquafer Protection Overlay District, and it's dated June 2, 2020, which is the date of the town meeting, the way it stands now. One of the things that happens here is, we've changed the title of the map from the way it was in the past, because there were some conflicts between the titles of the maps and the bylaw, and, you know, so we just wanna make it consistent, we wanna make sure that everybody understands, in this particular case, that it is an overlay district over the existing zoning. So we're kind, kind of trying to bring all of those overlay district maps that it had, that the town has into some type of a consistent format, basically. We also have set up, I worked with Mike O'Reilly, we set up an overall map, lay out like a template within the GIS, so we can have consistency amongst all of the maps. The next item would be to, we would replace all instances where it refers to Aquafer Protection District or districts, protection districts throughout the entire article, and we would place replace all of that, as I said, with Aquafer Protection Overlay District. The next item would be by replacing instances of Area 1, Area 2, Area 3, with Zone 1, Zone 2, and Zone 3, respectively, and this is in keeping with the, with DEP's terminology, so we got away from areas throughout the whole bylaw. The next, the next instance, we had cleaned up the reference to MAS DEP, we put the appropriate acronym as well, so all instances of that. The next item was, we would like to delete 28.3C exclusive of 28.3C 1 through 4 in its entirety, and by replacing it with the following. Again, this has got to do with zone, in this particular case, it's got to do with Zone 3, land area beyond the area of Zone 2, from which the surface water and groundwater drain in Zone 2, the the recharge and potential groundwater development areas are in common, in combination of MAS DEP-approved Zone 2 areas in town of Dartmouth areas, as determined. The next thing is, we have a reference to the MAS DEP Division of Water Supply Protection. We cleaned up some, some instances under the next thing that have to do with the MAS general laws. The next item is, we're replacing all instances throughout the document of liquid petroleum with home heating oil, that's more relevant terminology, that's what the Building Commissioner and the Fire Chiefs had preferred we go with. The next item is to, is to delete all references, see the town, see the Board of Health for fuel storage regulations, those regulations have been rescinded a number of years ago, and there has been no replacement, so in talking with Chris Masu, we have decided to delete those references. The next item is to delete, there is an unlettered paragraph in Section 285BF, which begins with "provide storage listed in subsection blank," and we're gonna delete that whole entire paragraph, again, that's working with all of the department heads, the technical reviewing department heads that have to do with this particular regulation, and with the Fire Chiefs. The next item is 285B8C in its entirety, and we're gonna replace that with lot coverage calculations for open space residential design, open space residential development, OSRD subdivision, as defined and governed in Article 11 of the zoning bylaw, shall be passed on the inclusion of proportionate share of the permanently protected open space provided as part of the OSRD subdivision. That comes about as a result of your last town meeting, and the, the changes that were made to the OSRD, and the removal of cluster any references to cluster, to cluster development. The next item has to do with replacing onsite liquefied petroleum gas. We're, we're going to replace any other instances, and we're gonna put onsite liquefied petroleum gas, LPG, again, that's current technology, and again, that comes from the Fire Chiefs and the Building Commissioner. The next item is, and as approved by town engineer or conservation, we're gonna add that language in. In those particular cases, there was something slightly different there, we just need to clean that up. We're gonna delete Section 28.7F outright, and then we're adding 28.7H, "All subsurface infiltration systems shall be constructed with a two-foot minimum separation between the bottom of the structure and the maximum ground elevation, as determined by MAS DEP Soil Evaluator, in accordance with 310 CMR 15.103.3, as witnessed by the Board of Health or authorized agent." That comes about as about to, as a result of MAS DEP now having Soil Evaluator criteria, which is something that, that there wasn't in existence before. When you're looking at the map, the main change to the map has to do with the Violetta wells. I don't know if you can all see it, I can't. Did I lose everybody?
Well, I'm here, but I don't see the map.
Okay.
You lost the map, Christine.
I'm sorry, let me see here.
That's all right.
I can hear you perfectly, the map got lost, but it's no big deal. You might wanna get rid of that install later thing or something, you could get rid of that, it would help you.
The what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
On, on your something about software installations, if you got rid of that, it would get easier.
Okay, I don't remember that. I don't see it now, but, okay. I think that's one. So the map, again, is on the town website. It is exactly, it's pretty similar to what we had, we're just cleaning up, the locations went over slightly, I'm struggling now, John, Peter?
I have the map up now.
Okay, but I don't see anybody, I don't see anything, except for one tiny little, I don't know what I did. Okay, there we go.
Everyone can see the map now?
Yes.
Okay, so when you actually get a chance to look at the maps yourselves, there's a little, I'm bringing the cursor over these area here, so they've just been moved over ever so slightly. There really are no other changes to the map, other than, other than, than visual and graphical area, graphical corrections and labeling. And again, those, those those well areas ever so slightly as a result of Dave Hickox's work. So I don't know if anyone has any questions for me on this one, or if you wanna open, open it up to the public.
Does anybody in the public have any questions on this? Peter, do we see anybody clapping, whatever it is, a little symbol?
I do not, I do not see a raised hand, no.
Okay, any questions from the board members? No, I think we all went over this prior to this, we're pretty, I, I'm pretty familiar now with what Christine has done, with the board.
I am too, I'm comfortable with what Christine has done, unless the public has any questions.
Okay, are we ready to move on to B?
Okay.
Christine, B?
So B is the can you see the map now?
Oh, we see you.
You see me, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I might use the map. Do you see the map now?
Nope.
I can put up the floodplain.
Kevin?
There you go.
Okay.
Scary.
All right, all right, now I did it, okay. So this one, as we've talked about each time, is, is the flood insurance, is, is the floodplain map. Again, this one will have a slight title change, and again, it's just to make it consistent, and to make it clear that to everyone that this is an overlay district to the existing zoning map. In this particular case, you can see over to the left-hand side here, where I'm kind of circling, those are all of the new panels in town, so this map, this is the map that will be approved at town meeting, but there will also be a reference map for everybody who goes to the town website or anything else, there is something there now, I mean, it just points to where the panels are, and basically, panels are, the the town has kind of been split up into grids, and each grid has a panel, or, you know, is, and each panel is represented by one of these numbers, so these are all of the numbers that were going to be changed in 2020. Down below, there was one piece that was changed in 2014, and then there are still some 2009 maps that, that are still in existence in the town that FEMA recognizes. that FEMA recognizes and has not changed. So that's why there's three dates, there's three sets of maps, three sets of panels. The individual FEMA maps are up on the website. There's also eventually there'll be copies in the, in the planning office for people to reference and they will be available online. So in this particular one, we're going to delete, this is section.
Christine, at this point, can I make a recommendation? Can we have copies of this at the police station because that's still open to the public?
Have copies of the map? You mean you want them to have the maps posted or you want the?
Yeah, yeah. If anybody, because they can't come into the town hall to get copies, but they could to the police station to get a copy.
Okay. Yeah. And like I said, it also will be on the, on the town website as soon as we're finished here. I have it on just for you, but I didn't put it up on every, so there'll be numerous places, numerous places like people can see any other map in town. There are maps. So this will be available, but I can put some at the police station as well. I will also be getting copies of the maps to Greg Bonds and Sean for, for the Warren article.
Okay.
All right, so. We're going to delete Section 27.2A in its entirety and replace it with the following. The floodplain overlay district is superimposed as an overlay district over any other district established by the zoning bylaw. The floodplain overlay district includes the flood hazard mitigation, or the flood hazard area shown on separate pages of the Dartmouth zoning map labeled as Dartmouth Floodplain Overlay District dated again 2020. A copy of this is on file with the clerk. Said map is in compilation of the Bristol County Flood Insurance Rate Maps, also referred to as FRAMS, issued by the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the administration of the National Flood Insurance Program. And includes all special flood hazard areas within the Town of Dartmouth designated as Zone A, AE, A8, AO, A99, B, and BE. In, in the event of a discrepancy between the map and the criteria used to define the district, criteria shall control. The next thing will be, we will just be cleaning up any references to federal management, federal emergency management agency will put the word FEMA in wherever, or the acronym FEMA, after that's been used initially. We will be, the next item will be replacing the phrase National Insurance Flood Program. It's in 27.4K 2 and 3 in all instances of the phrase Flood Insurance Administration. So we replace everything with NFIP in those particular cases, which stands for National Flood Insurance Program. Next item will be replacing all instances of floodplain district within the article and we will make it floodplain overlay district. The next phase, the next item will be to make sure that we have the appropriate panel references. Those panel references are in the bylaw each time. So again, it will go through those which will be new to, to the town in July, in July 8th of 2020. The one that still stands from July 16th, 2014. Do that stand from July 7th, 2009. The next item will be deleting the word report from 27.2C. That's because it's a study that's being referred to. There is not a report. It's a, it's a study. The next item is 27.4A 1A and 1C. And we will be replacing those with Massachusetts State Building Code currently programated as 780 CMR or herein amended or replaced. Which addresses floodplain and coastal high hazard areas. B will be Wetlands Protection Regulations of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection or currently programated as 310 CMR 10 or as hereafter amended or replaced. And then C will be Chapter 360 of, of the general bylaws. These, these amendments are being brought forth just to make sure that the bylaw stays current with current regulations and references correct items of the Dartmouth bylaw as well, so. The next item is we'll be recodifying, basically just renumbering 27.4K as 27.4L. We will do the same thing for 27.4J as 27.4K. And we will insert a new 27.4J as follows floodway data in Zones A, A1 through 30 and A3, AE along water courses that have not had regulatory floodway designated. The best available federal, state, local, or floodway data shall be used to prohibit encroachments in floodways which would result in any increase in flood, flood levels within the community during the occurrence of a base flood discharge. This came about as, as a result of DEP's thorough review of the existing bylaw. So they specifically requested that this item be put in. They also have reviewed all of the changes that Brian Cruz and myself have put forth. The next thing, we're going to just correct references to MAST General Law and MAST General Laws. So that's it for that, for Article B, which is the floodplain overlay. Does anybody have any questions with regard to that one?
Fans have any questions?
No questions for me.
No questions.
Nope.
Nothing new.
So. Yeah, I don't know if, if anybody in the audience has any questions. I do see 15 participants or so.
I've not seen anyone raise their hand in the audience. No.
Okay.
Thank you.
If somebody is trying to raise their hand in some capacity, if you want to just. Or you can always send a chat as well just to get our attention and then we'll, we'll make sure that we open it up. Nope. Okay. So the next article is Article C. And that's got to do with sign provisions. And basically, these are just corrections to the existing bylaw. As I had said earlier this evening, the town will vote to amend Section 375-25 of the zoning bylaw dealing with signs. This Warren article would update the zoning bylaw by comprehensively correcting Schiavner's errors that occur in the bylaw. The planning board will serve as the sponsor for this. The requested revisions of the article are brought to the attention of the board via town council letter to the planning board in January. The proposed, the proposed corrections will correct errors to the existing bylaws which were not identified during the 2018 update of that particular bylaw. And if I take you through each one of those, 25.2A 5, we're going to delete phrases. We're going to delete the phrase "In inducement to promote or attract attention to a particular business or person, any such flag shall not exceed 60 square feet in area and shall be flown from a pole not more than 40 inches." Obviously, there are numerous errors with this. Obviously, it came from some other section of the thing. It got somehow transposed in there, so we're just removing that. The next one would be to amend 25.2B 2 by deleting the phrase "Or a 40, or 40 feet in height from grade" and replacing with, replacing it with "Or as inducement to promote or attract attention to a particular business or person. Any such flag shall not exceed 60 square feet in area and shall be flown from a pole not more than 40 feet in height from grade." So that's what the correction will be. Excuse me. The next item would be a definition for the word source in the, in that section of the bylaw. And it would be Section 25.3 of the zoning bylaw by deleting the phrase "The light emitting any," the light emitting element any and replacing it with, with just any. The next item is in 25.9I11. And it is replacing a, the phrase "A single color EMC at a distance with a single color EMC." "All measurements shall be taken perpendicular to the face of the EMC at the distance." The next item will be in 25.9I12. And that's deleting the phrase "All measurements shall be taken perpendicular to the face of the." The next item will be in 25.13A. And it will delete the phrase "Is allowed from the first sentence." That is all for Article C.
Do we have any questions from the audience?
I do not see any.
Okay.
Chat things down the bottom? Does that? Oh, so, so we have somebody named John. I'm not sure that I'm going to say the last name correctly, C-O-U-T-I-N-H-O of a law group. And he's asking, he doesn't see the, how to raise his hand. It's not clearly marked and others may be having issues as well.
He was, he was a co-sponsor, co-host, so, because I thought he was part of the articles, so. But he can talk now. He's unmuted.
Okay. Do you have something to say now?
And not, not on this. It was, I was asking, because we have something coming up in a minute. And when you asked earlier for anybody to raise their hand, I just can't find an option to raise my hand anywhere on the screen. And I'm here with Joseph Hamel as well to address some, as you know, later in the, in the, in the meeting. And he doesn't see an option to raise his hand either. So I'm not really sure how, other than when you say, does anybody have anything? Maybe give a minute or two for us to be able to actually just yell out hello or something. I don't really know. There's no option here. I don't see one.
I'm not seeing it either, Peter, to be honest with you.
Because when you're, when you're mocked as a co-host, you don't have that option. You can unmute yourself. So he's with the group doing the next presentation, so he can just unmute himself.
So now that I've finished this one, do you want to open up everybody's microphones for a minute and see if anybody has any questions on the first, the first three articles? Since they're all planning boards selected? Can we do that, Lori?
Yes.
Can we do that, Peter? Can I do that or can you?
I can do it, but I mean.
I, I mean, maybe nobody will have any comments and then we can shut them back down again or.
Yeah. Does anybody have any comments on the first three articles? Do we see anybody who wants to comment on the first three articles?
Nope, not seeing any.
Okay, so let's go on to.
Article E, no, I'm sorry, Article D. And that is the citizen petition Warren article concerning the amendment of, Amendment to Rezone Assessors Map 56 Lot 6 from Single Residence B to General Residence. So do you want to bring forward the presentation at this time then?
Right, let the sponsor at this time make their presentation.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
So this is Joseph Hamel. I'm with NextEra Energy. I apologize, my video for some reason is now not working, but. So we are looking to rezone the property as mentioned. Oh wait, is that working? Sorry. We are looking to rezone the property, Map 56 Lot 6 from General Residence B over to General Business. We brought this to the planning board's attention previously in March. And so now we are following up again. And the intent is to do a solar project. And so that's kind of what's driving the desire. Our landowner did get the required signatures. He had about 26 signatures that he obtained. And the majority of these signatures were from the butters. However, a follow-up item from the last meeting was to make sure we reached out to all the butters because I understand the planning board had a, another application with a different project altogether where there may have been butters that were not notified and it created a situation. So we had, we have done so. We've reached out to the majority of the butters that I'm aware of. And I have got, I've provided four letters or emails acknowledging the project and either showing their support or stating that they are not objecting to a solar project being in that property. And then the others, I either was not able to reach or they just didn't provide a comment. So, so yeah, I'm not sure if there's any more backgrounds that needs to be provided, but I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay, could, could you, could you give the location of this property, please?
Yes, it is, well, it's a little bit landlocked. It is between 195 and Route 6. It is, I guess, fairly close between like Cross Road and Hillcrest.
And I believe you, we talked about the only way to get onto the property is an easement that you have with the electric company. Am I right or wrong?
That is our primary option, but not our only option. Our landowner owns land that is adjacent to this land that we could use. However, there's a little bit more complications with there and that's not the primary access route currently to that property. Currently, the property is being accessed through that Eversource right by necessity that has been transferred over ownership over the years. So currently, it's accessed through Eversource's land and that's what we intend to do is we've reached out to them. I reached out to them last week and their feedback was, you know, we'll, we'll look at it. We'll assign someone a team to it, but based on what you've described and based on her recollection of the, this ordeal in the past, she didn't see any problems with it. So that's where we're at at the moment.
Okay. And do you have anything else to add or open it up to the public?
I don't think so, unless John or, John, I believe both of them are on the call as well.
Yeah, if I could real quick. So my, my understanding is there were some, there were some.
Have your name and your name and address?
Sure. John, Attorney John Catino, Catino Law Group, 511 West Grove Street, Suite 302, Middleborough, Mass.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Apologies. So to, I guess to, to expound on what Joseph had started talking about earlier, I don't know what's going on now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just trying to put the map up of the, of the space. Maybe I should have waited. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I, I actually have another, I don't know how to share. I have a screen. I have the Dartmouth GIS up so I could show you the parcels. But I think at the prior meeting, there was a question about access for this solar project. And what, what the owner has is an, is an easement that's been established by many, many years of use. I believe Attorney Mark Levine of, of, sorry, Mark Levin, Levin and Levin out of Fall River. He was involved in the acquisition of the property and he was also involved with some of the site work that was done by SciTech. There is, we have a letter from SciTech, a very lengthy letter explaining the, the, the history of the deeds and an opinion based on the easements. There is access to this property that goes over property now owned by N-Star, or I'm sorry, Eversource. So that would be, I think, the primary means of access. I think another means of access would be a little more cumbersome for the solar project. So that's, that's the route they're taking at this point, we're planning on taking anyway. So I don't know if that explains it all, but I just wanted to add that, you know, we do have some documentation, a letter of opinion from an attorney, a letter of opinion from an engineer having reviewed the deeds over, over 100 years or more over this property. And I think, I don't know if I can share it. I don't, I'm not really sure how to share my screen, but I do have the GIS up so I can show you the.
If you look towards the bottom of your screen, it says share screen and a green arrow up.
Okay.
Unshare mine or does that?
Already did it, Christine.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, can you see, can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the part that's surrounded in blue, if you're, if you're looking at what I, what I'm looking at, I'm trying to move it over here. Okay, so that's sort of the, where most of the, the project would sit. I mean, I don't have the, the project layout in front of me, but most of the project would sit here. This other part here that I'm now highlighting in blue, that's property that's owned by. This other part here, that I'm now highlighting in blue, that's property that's owned by Commonwealth Electric or, or Eversource. And that, that has access on Cross Road, there is an easement to come on to there, and then access this other parcel that's 56 dash 6. He does also own this other part below, that I just highlighted, uh, that's parcel 52 dash 6. And, uh, so there could be access that way, but you can see, um, you know, to get from Hillcrest all the way through 52 6, to get to that other, other parcel, it would, it would be obviously much more cumbersome than, than to be able to just access from, uh, Cross Road, through the easement that, that they do have. So I don't, I don't know if that helps. I'm sorry?
Uh, I'd like to ask a question, if the Chair approves.
Go ahead.
Could, could you just back up one second, before we get lost in the details of access choices? And tell us, what is the property in question used for now? And what is it going to be used for when it becomes a sol, apparently a solar farm? Just give us the overview details of what it is now, and what it's going to be, regardless of how we get there.
To my knowledge, oh, go ahead, Joe.
I was gonna actually give, um, John or Holly a chance, since they're the landowner.
Yeah, to my knowledge, the, the landowner isn't using the property for anything specific at this point. I mean, he may access it to do, you know, what people do in their yards normally, I don't know. You know, uh, go for walks in the woods, it, it, I believe it's, it's wooded, uh, land at this point. Holly, you could probably get more information.
It's never been developed in any way?
Holly, maybe you can give more information on that? But to my knowledge, it has not been developed. Holly? Oh, you're muted. Bottom, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, so right now, it's just vacant land, we haven't developed at all on it.
So just state your name and your, um, your address for the record.
Holly Cabral, 33 Hillcrest Street, and we own the property on crossroads.
Thank you, Holly, can you just tell us what the plan is, now that you're gonna go forward?
We're trying to do a solar farm.
And how big, ju- just describe it briefly.
I believe it's 12 acres, is that what it is?
No, that's 20, 27 acres. Whatever they use.
The parcel, I believe, is, um, 38 altogether, but I think they're gonna use 22.
It's, yeah, it's gonna be around 15 to 20 acres, just based on a white land delineation we already did on-site, and just property setbacks, um, that kind of just shrinks it a little bit, from what the total parcel is.
Correct.
And is it, and right now, it's a, it's an undeveloped wooded area, it's going to become a solar farm, you hope? And does, is it in view of anybody, once it becomes a solar farm?
No, it's kind of like in the woods, it's hidden.
It's in the middle of the woods.
It's in the middle of the woods, so, it's, it's hidden from Cross Roads, it's hidden from any streets that, you can't see it at all.
Does it sit on any wetlands, or anybody else who has some kind of other ancillary jurisdiction over it?
No, not that I know of, I mean, everyone's been out there, they wouldn't have put it, you know, put it in a plan if it was gonna be on wetland. So, as far as I know, everyone's come in, surveyed it, and it's good to know.
And is, the woodlands and whatever that's gonna be torn down to make it possible, so the solar farm can see the sun, can you describe that, is it big trees, little trees, hay field?
Steve, Steve, I'm gonna butt in, I've allowed you to ask these questions. But we are here strictly to take a piece of land and rezone it from residential to, I mean, from residential to general business. And what they're gonna do with the property is, is nice to know. But what we have to decide is, is this proper to rezone this property from residential to general business? That's...
Yes, and Madam Chair, I'm, I'm in agreement with you, I wanna understand that too. And so far, it sounds to me like it's very appropriate to rezone it, because if we rezone it residential, we'll lose money. If we rezone it solar, we might make money, I'm trying to find if there's any reasons not to do this.
To be honest, I totally agree, if you were to put residential, you're gonna have more traffic, you're gonna have more kids in school, you're gonna have more houses. I totally agree, it's out of sight, it's not bothering anyone, it's not costing the town any money. I think it's, I thought it was a great plan, if not, then we would think about putting houses back there. So, I think it's, that's why all the Butters really, really wanted it. They were like, "It's out of sight, out of mind, not costing anybody money." I think it's a great plan.
Thank you, you've answered my questions, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I say something?
Yes.
The map that I had put up before is the, is the zoning map, and I was just trying to give you a general location, so you could see that where the, where the property falls, um, within the residential and the, uh, general, like, and, uh, butting the, um, General Business District. I'm not sure exactly what the attorney was referring to with regard to the, um, notifications. I don't know if that was for another, um, project, or if that's for this one. I mean, I want to make sure that we've, that it's been noticed appropriately, so if, if it's for this one, um, I, I guess I'm confused on what, what that actual discussion was, so I just wanna make sure that I had that clear.
Sure, I think that's for Joe, I, I didn't speak, I didn't speak about any notifications, but, uh, Joe, no, that's okay. Joe, if you wanna explain what, what that was.
Yeah, so, um, essentially, at the last meeting, it was brought up, and I, I apologize, I don't remember what exactly was, but there was some other developer that came in, those proposing, uh, some commercial building, or a gas station, or something along these lines, that really had a lot of public pushback, because the Butters were not notified. And so it kind of took them by surprise at the meetings, where they found out. And so the recommendation of the board was to go all, to all the Butters, and let them know, and try to bring as many, uh, letters of supporters, any letters of notification, really, just to make sure that they're aware of the project. And so that's what we did over the past month or so, was, um, go back to the people that signed, go back to the people that we hadn't reached out to previously, and make sure that they were, um, they were knowledgeable of the project. And that was mainly through, um, well, mainly through phone calls, obviously, with, with everything going on here.
So I had, I had a couple of emails that came through today, that's what you're referring to, or no?
Yeah, yes ma'am, that's right.
Okay, so were there any other ones, or, and I guess I'm still confused on whether or not this notification issue had to do with this project, or with some other project, just so I understand.
The notification issue was with another project, not ours. It was recommended for our project, that we reach out based on, uh, prior experience your town had with that other project.
The emails that came in have to do with your project?
That is correct, that is correct, ma'am.
That's what we need to know.
So, so the, the, yeah, the planning board did not receive those yet, um, today, because of the timing of when they came in. I will put them in the packages, um, for...
Yes.
For information going before town meeting.
So I got those today, um, I provided my email to our landowner, who went out and spoke with many of the neighbors, and there was some, I don't know what the issue was, they thought it went through, I didn't receive any emails, so that's kind of why you got a lot of last-minute responses.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I have everything in the record and in the file, so that if anybody comes in to look at it, or, you know, to discuss in detail, we can provide them all of the information.
Of course.
I, I think the important thing to do is, um, I, the map that you showed is good, but I think you need to show that it abuts general, uh, limited industry, I think it would have butched, general business.
General business.
That needs to be shown, too.
Peter, can we put that, um, other map back up, so I can point to everybody?
So, for the record, I did provide that to Christine, I think that's what she was going to show. It shows all the Butters, and it shows the, the zoning and the close-up.
So, um, I have the cursor over this particular area, and this is it, right? So, it would have butched, it would have butched right here, so the, the pink... Huh? Right in the middle, basically right in the middle of the map, in the green, you see me moving it around now?
No.
No.
No, I can't see it either, no.
Christine, um, click on the hand at the top.
Click on the hand at the top, yep.
If you switch it from the arrow to the hand, it'll be a little easier to see where your mouse is.
I can't, I can't, oh, okay.
I mean, that's, that's the real issue that pertains.
Christine, you're on the wrong laptop, you gotta go to the other laptop.
Okay. I can try that all day. He is a patron of a saint with me.
There you are.
There we are, okay, so it's right above that, so, I mean, it would not be a, a spot zoning or anything like that, it ties into the existing, um, very, very nice league.
District.
Yeah, and it is within, like you said, it is within the State Road and the, um, the 195 corridor, so, that's also to consider.
I think that's what, that's, that's what we have to look at, we have to look at, does this make sense to rezone to another district, because it abuts that district? And it's, it's landlocked, et cetera, et cetera, those are the issues to look at, that's...
Laurie, and if I could comment, I agree with you that those are issues to look at, and this looks like a good reason to approve it. But frankly, I know we can't do spot zoning, those are separate issues, and I rec, I respect that. But basically, this is a good idea financially for the town, as opposed to a bad idea, and I think we ought to acknowledge that.
Laurie, some comments, uh, from myself. So we had some, uh, somebody come before us, I can't remember who it was, that, that, these folks, uh, with some preliminary stuff. And we had some discussion on this. My concern here is that we're taking, uh, residential and proposing general business, with, and, and we can't ignore the fact that it is a proposed solar farm, because these folks have admitted to us, they've gone to the Butters, uh, and asked them, "Would you want to oppose a solar farm?" And they're getting feedback that apparently there's no objections, according, uh, to these folks. But, like Laurie says, we are zoning, um, this from residential to general business. Once that done, it's done, if it's passed, um, they can abandon the solar farm and build a box store back there. And that's what I really gotta look at. Now, to Steve's point, what's better, commercial, um, or residential, when it comes to the financial end of the town? I agree. But I've got concerned about a Butters who have an investment, and that whole area in green is zone residential. People have homes on there, or plan to put future homes on there, and all of a sudden, they have a giant box store on 38 acres, uh, now that abuts their residential property, which didn't exist before. So that concerns me, we had talked about it the last meeting, would you folks be interested in putting a deed restriction on this? That it could only be solar farms? And I haven't heard any comment to that, that you're, uh, willing to do that, if this were to, uh, even before town meeting, if this would have passed at town meeting, um, is that your plan? Because I, I, I'm gonna have a difficult time voting in favor of this, uh, again, for those reasons I, I mentioned, that people have invested in residential properties out there, and now it's general business, and anything could go back there. Comments from the applicant at all, or...
We just want to do a solar farm, I mean, there's nothing more we can tell you, um. We don't plan on doing another business, if anything, if they ever pulled out, we'd wanna build another home or something for our children, but that would be it, that was the reason why we purchased the property, because...
Yeah, but once, once it's zone general business, the land becomes much more valuable. So you can say, you know, we, we don't, if we don't build solar, we're gonna build houses or a home. It's not gonna be zone residential anymore, it's zone general business. At, 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 now, it's a premium price compared to the residential, uh, zoning that's out there. So, again, my concern is that you have a Butters that could see, um, a box store, or a use that they never envisioned, uh, next to their property.
So John, I think...
If I may?
Yep.
Go ahead.
If I may, uh, you know, the, the, the app, the owner isn't, hold on, I'm trying to figure out how to, how does this work, here we go. So, the owner's not looking to do anything outside of this, and I understand there was some talk about, uh, having some kind of a deed restriction. My only concern with that is that, and, and to play, again, I'm, I'm attorney, I'm the attorney for the landowner, not the solar developer, I don't represent, um, I don't represent them, I represent the Cabrals. My concern with having a deed restriction, especially a permanent deed restriction, would be that, let's say 20 years goes, let's say they do put a, a solar farm in, and, and, and it, and it exists for 20 years, and at the end of the solar farm lease period, the solar company says, "We're done, we're out." Now, now the landowner can't do, they can't put houses up on their house, on their land. I would think that, rather than a deed restriction, maybe a covenant, that so long as it's being used for solar farm purposes, or for solar development purposes, or power generating purposes, whatever, maybe wind goes there at some point, I don't know. But I, I guess my concern is, if we tie it together to the zoning, that would then protect, I think, the interests of the town, as well as the interest of, of the homeowner, or the landowner.
Coutino, may I make a suggestion?
I, I disagree it would protect the interests of the town, because it's just a...
May I make a suggestion, people?
Can I finish my statement, the solar farm...
Of course, I agree with you, John.
Okay, so the solar farm, uh, may be defunct in a year or two. So your covenant, you're saying, "Well, it, it may last 20 years," it may last one or two years. And now, these Butters have bought into a project, have said, "I, I don't mind a solar farm next to me." And one or two years later, even though I, I, it's the intent of the landowners, uh, to do this, it may be a different landowner, they may have a different intent, or something, totally, uh, something in mind. Things change, two years from now, and now, a Butters are seeing a much different project, a much more intense project, right behind your senior home, um, and that, that frightens me.
Can I address that?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead.
Or did you wanna say something, Steve?
Well, I'll, I do wanna say something, but I don't care who goes first.
Okay, well, if I can address that real quick, that, that was, that was why I, what I was suggesting was a covenant with the town, it would be a restrictive covenant with the town that says, as long as there is, assault, you know, a solar, uh, commercial zone, general business zone, that it would be limited to the business. I mean, again, I, I, we're looking to have residential switched, rezoned to general business. And your concern is that, "Well, if this dies in a year or two, now we put up a big box store or something." And I guess I'm saying, "How can you put up a big box store if you have a covenant that says, you're not gonna do anything other than a solar farm?"
And attorney, I would like to agree with you...
Or it reverts back to, to residential.
I'd like to agree with you.
Which is what it is now.
Covenant is a very good idea to start with. And then the second piece of the covenant is simply that you agree not to subdivide the property in the future, and also not to render it impermeable. The solar farm still leaves the ground impermeable, and it doesn't hurt the environment, and so forth, and so on. And so if you agree that it's not gonna be sub, the subdivision is what croaks the town financially, and the paved parking lot with the box store on it is what croaks the Butters' property values, which is John's concern. I agree with both of those. So if you give a covenant that says, "A, we're not gonna subdivide it and make it a cul-de-sac, which will cost the town a fortune, and B, we're happy to go back to residential, but we'll never build more than one or two houses on the 38 acres," that's okay, too. There's a way around this, this, there's a way to do this project and constructively, but just put in the covenants that will protect the town for the next 50 years, including John's concern about hurting everybody else's property value, because of a big box store with a god-awful parking lot, and including my concern, which is that every time we build a cul-de-sac, the town goes half-broke, we're hurting ourselves with population growth. These are simple things to fix, we just have to think about.
So my, it, I'm, I'm not an attorney, so the difference between a covenant and a deed restriction, I, I can't comment on. But I don't know if a covenant would guarantee, uh, that nothing else will be built on it, if it can accomplish what Steve, uh, just said. If, once it's zone general business, you can't put one or two houses on there, because it's not zone residential. So we permanently...
John, it would go back to residential, if they stop being a solar farm. It would go back to residential if they stopped being a solar farm.
No, it doesn't, Steve. Excuse me, I have the floor, it cannot go back to residential unless it is rezoned through town meeting.
Correct.
And once it's, once it's rezoned, it stays there, unless it goes back to town meeting and gets rezoned. And you can't hold a property owner hostage.
Correct, so, my concerns are still there, so I'm wondering if the best approach for the applicant is to go for a variance. Again, we're, we're, we're changing, uh, the district for a single use, and the best approach, in my opinion, would be a variance, rather than go for a zoning change. Because a zoning change, again, opens it up to, uh, a lot of different things that, uh, I think would make a Butters very angry.
So I have one other question with regard to this, um, and that's got to do with access to the, uh, to the lot. And right now, there would be no other access, unless you get some type of an easement from the, uh, from Eversource, is that correct?
No, we have, we have an easement over the, over the Eversource property.
Right, but so you have, you have it, or your clients have it, no, but nobody else has... Right, but so you have, you have it, or your clients have it. No, but nobody else has that easement right now. So that's the other piece that the planning board needs to keep in mind as well.
Yeah, but the easement goes-
What?
Come on, I don't think-
So if it got sold to a box store, the easement goes with the parcel.
John, I don't think they can go for a variance. It's a single residence B. If I remember correctly, we passed, there were no change use variances given in that area.
We, yeah, that's correct.
A use variance, yeah.
Correct.
Got that.
Now, is there any limitation to the easement by Eversource? Do they have any, what, what's the verbiage? And I guess, John, I'm asking that of you.
I'm pretty sure it would be to the landowner with the property.
It, it taught me.
But yes, John, as the attorney, is there any restriction to that easement? Because an easement can be restrictive.
So this is an easement that, that the landowners had before Eversource ever took title to that property.
Okay, so is there-
The only way, the only way you could lose the easement is if the easement holder releases. The, so you have a, you have a servient tenant, and you have a dominant, you have the sort of the parent-child, right? The landowner is the parent, the child holds the power. The only way the, the landowner can get rid of the easement is if the, the person who has the easement gives it up. And my client will never give up the easement, right? So that goes with the land moving forward.
But my question, I guess, is, is there any restriction on the easement?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so when it was written, it could have had restrictions on it. Easement, they could have said to eat, you know, to milk your cows and graze, where now they could increase it to, you know, go to your solar panels, but they could say, we're not gonna allow you to build and use that easement to go to a box store or, or to go to a residential neighborhood.
Oh, and, right, theoretically, theoretically, the landowner, the Eversource, could put an additional restriction, but as it is right now, it, there is no restriction.
Could the holder of the easement put on the same restriction?
That's why, that's what I'm asking.
Could, could the applicant, the, the own, the applicant who wants to build the solar farm, could they voluntarily all those further restrictions that Kevin just mentioned?
No, it would have to come from Eversource. Because they're, they're the landowner. So if there's gonna be a change in how the land is used, it would have to be Eversource that says, no, you can't, you know, fly kites here, whatever. You have an easement to, to do X, Y, and Z, but you don't have an easement to do A, B, and C. It would be them limiting that. As it is right now, it's a, it's an, it's an open easement to the, to, to Mr. and Mrs. Cabral, to, to the landowner, the abutting landowner on this lot fifty-six-six, to, to, to enter and, and, and leave, you know, for, for whatever purposes, to my knowledge.
Wouldn't it, if they changed, if they changed the easement, wouldn't both parties have to agree to it?
They would. They would, yeah. But, but it's not unilateral on the, on the, the subservient side, right? It wouldn't just be the Cabral saying, we're gonna change the easement. They can't do that. It has to come from Eversource. But the, but the one who holds the power has to be able, has to agree to it. But I mean, yeah.
The easement, there, there's language in that easement, and I don't know what it is, but let's, let's assume right now it's an access easement, the right to, to pass and repass. But easements can be many things. Easy because be, well, it's only to allow for utilities such as drainage or water and not the right to pass or repass. So it falls back to, yes, you're right, the parent, the original owners, and what that easement was specifically saying for. Eversource can't say at this point, oh, well, we don't like a box store back there, so you can't use our property. If the, if the easement states the right to pass and repass, they can't stop you. So we don't have that in front of us. Apparently, you're not a hundred percent sure what's in the easement or that language is.
I, I am, I am sure. It's, it's the pass and repass. That is, that is the access that was granted many, many years ago. And again, but these are still, I, I think, what we were talking about and what I was alluding to, that, that's to Steve and to you earlier. A lot of these things can be addressed in a covenant. You can, you can, you can draft a restrictive covenant with the town. It's an agreement with the town that says, I, the landowner, am agreeing with the town, and this rides with the, with the property forever or for a set number of years or however you want to term it. It's a, it's a contract. And you can set the terms to the contract that say, maybe you're not allowing, you know, a bo, a box store to go in or the, the, the use of, of the easement wouldn't be for, you know, again, whatever issues you, you might have, your reservations. We could, we could draft all of that in a, in a covenant, because again, that's what that is. It's, it's, it's an agreement with the town to either do or not do something.
I agree with you completely, and I'm not a lawyer, but I completely agree with your concept. Picture point of view, a solar farm here would be good for the town. A box store or a subdivision would be bad for the town. I think those of you who are lawyers and understand the details can write a covenant that could make it so that we could do what the current landowner is proposing to do, because it sounds like it makes common sense. And we could put a covenant that restricts the horrible imaginaries and the worst-case scenarios down the line, the two of which, which we know hurt the town in the long-term future, are some kind of impermeable surface on the bottom. It could be a box store, it could be a pavement of any kind, a parking lot, or it could be a subdivision. Those things hurt the town. Other things don't hurt the town, and I'm sure you can draft a covenant that would make that work.
John, a, a, as I said, you folks came before us a, a while ago, and this was a concern I had back then. I talked about, are you proposing a deed restriction? And that's what I was hoping to see. Now you've changed it to a covenant. I don't, you know, some kind of guarantee for the town protection. I don't have that in front of me this evening. I don't see any, uh, any steps towards that end. Strictly action for a complete rezone, which at this point, from the facts I know to date, unless somebody pipes in and the artist with some different facts, I don't know if you've gotten my vote yet to, to make this change. Again, I was looking for some kind of guarantee that this would no longer be further developed into something that the abuddies didn't like. And again, you've gone in there saying, we're building a solar farm, and it could be something totally different. The day after town meeting, your client could walk away and said, I'm not gonna do a solar. I'm not, I'm not saying that's their intent, but in reality, that could happen. And the town ends up with something, or the abuddies end up with something much different than what they thought they were gonna get. I was hoping that's what we'll be seeing this evening, some kind of lang- that would assure me that, that those kind of things wouldn't happen.
Madam Chair? Yes, go ahead, Margaret.
Thank you. I have a question about the easement. Okay, is the easement, it's in the deed, obviously, Attorney Coutino, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Do you believe so, or is it in the deed?
I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know if it's a separate document or if it's just an deed. You can have easements that are separate documents. I just don't have it in front of me.
Hi, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Hi, I do have the easement written for me, written from nineteen twenty-eight, given all access for a lifetime, is what it says on it. So it's in a separate document.
It's in a separate document, recorded, book and page?
It is, let's see.
If it's, if it's recorded, you'll see a book and page on, on the document. If it's not recorded, it means nothing.
Says Town of Dartmouth right on it, let's see, said to the use and behoof forever, subject to the right of redemption by any person legally entitled or to redeem the same and to all easements and restrictions lawfully exiting in upon and over said land. Let's see, nineteen twenty-eight, George Mary, and it's stamped Town of Dartmouth. I don't know if you can see it, but it says, Calum Martha, Massachusetts, is what is recorded.
So, so, okay, here's my other question, then. Obviously, that wasn't a, it wasn't a easement by prescription. That was an easement that, that, the, the town, not the town.
To the next person or whatever, your butter or whoever purchased the property that was, I mean, nineteen twenty-eight, whatever, you know, horse and carriage, said a different easement, different rights than what we have now. But I do have-
But that's, I guess that's what I'm a little, you know, I, I, that's what I'm concerned about, is how that easement is written. Okay, because that's really important, okay? And if it's not in the deed, it should be recorded. Am I right, Attorney Coutino? It has to be recorded somewhere.
It is recorded.
It, it has to be if we got it from the town hall, but this property, the same thing with mine, Dartmouth has not, not offense to the town, but has, like, lost paperwork. We had to do so much research. When we purchased ours, they said there was never anything on the other property. There was existing houses, people in the neighborhood would say there's homes. So there's lots of things that either were recording or missing or, or whatever, but we definitely have the paperwork, which we had to dig up years ago when we purchased the property.
So I, I guess I still don't know whether it's recorded or not, then. It could be just the paper that the town gave you.
I have no idea. I mean, this is nineteen twenty-eight, so you're going back. I don't know how they did things then, if it was different.
They recorded everything then. They still recorded deeds, they recorded easements, they recorded everything. Am I not right?
Like I said, at the Bristol, at the Bristol County Registry of Deeds.
Registry of Deeds, yeah.
It's common about the Massachusetts Bristol County Registry of Deeds. And it gives me the date, so it has to be recorded, maybe differently. They didn't put some kind of, or maybe it didn't print when they took copies of it, of the book and page, but definitely on there. It says Commissioner, at the time, and the date and stamped, and whoever did it at that time. So I mean, it has to be a legal document if they had it in their books and did it formally at the Registry of Deeds.
Oh, so you got it from the Registry of Deeds?
Absolutely, yes.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, yes, yeah, certainly.
All right, that's fine. I thought you got it from the Town of Dartmouth. You got it from the Registry of Deeds. Okay, that answers my question.
So at some point, if you could get us copies of that to put in the file, that might be helpful as we prepare for town meeting, just in case.
Yeah, absolutely.
An email's fine, if you want to just email it to me or whatever.
Any other questions from any of the board members? Any further comment from the applicant?
I'll just say one more thing. Obviously, we have an lease agreement, optional lease agreement with the landowners. That's currently in place. It is reported. This is what's in front of, what's in front of you guys essentially right now. What we're proposing is to change the zoning and basically have the zoning set with an impermeable surface with something that the landowners and the adjacent neighbors have approved. And it all will stay in effect for a minimum of twenty years, barring, you know, nothing crazy. Obviously, that can happen for any establishment, right? So that is what we're proposing, is basically keeping something that provides additional revenue to the town that is not opposed by the land or the neighbors, and that protects you guys for at least twenty years as opposed to our landowners subdividing, because there is no restriction right now, and it is general business, or general residence B. So they do have a right to subdivide, to put in housing at the moment, which is definitely not in favor of the town. So this is something I think that would be definitely beneficial to the town and to landowners, to the neighbors, to everyone in this meeting.
Well, I have one more question. I, I agree that, you know, about the easement, but if you were to put in a subdivision, would you be able to use that easement to access the subdivision?
I, I'm not sure who that's, that's aimed at, but the, if you look at the GIS and you look at the abutting properties, there is access on Hillcrest, there is access on, um, I'm sorry?
Elswick Street?
Elswick, that's the name, Elswick Street. So the, 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 the reason why they want to use the easement from cross over the Eversource land to get into-
No, I understand that. I understand that.
So, so, it's so- Yeah, to answer your question, it's not landlocked, right? It, it abuts another property, so they could get access through Elswick or, or Hillcrest.
I, I know it's not landlocked. My question was, in that easement, the way it's written, and they could go through the other street, I, I understand that, but with that easement, I, I don't know that Eversource would let you use that easement to access the land in any way for a subdivision. You'd have to go through the other way.
Yeah, probably, yeah, right. I, I would, I would imagine you're correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Ms. Noah? Yes, I know we cannot do, uh, ZBA, go to the ZBA. What about the use of a special permit?
No, because it's not allowed by the zoning in that area.
Okay.
Don't, it's not allowed in residential.
And that would require variance, which we can't do.
You can't get a variance in single residence B.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, I just have one comment. I, I think the current proposal has my support as it is, and I totally respect John's concern about the abuddies. And it would have even more support from me if we had the restrictive government that said we would, A, never subdivide the property more than one or two pieces for maybe one other house on it or something, and B, never pave it over and render it impermeable. I think both of those things would be really good things. I will vote for it the way it is, because the worst thing to do is have to be a cul-de-sac and a subdivision. And that's, so from a financial point of view, for the benefit of all the citizens of the town, the proposal in front of us is a good one. John's concern is, John Sousa's concern is quite correct, that from the standpoint of the abuddies, some kind of big box store with a giant parking lot is a disaster. And that's the abuddies, but it would be better for the town financially, but even though it's worse for the abuddies. I totally respect that, but we have to prioritize. So this, this proposal has my support. It would have my much stronger support with the restrictive covenant that, A, we'll never subdivide it more than one or two houses, and B, we'll never render it impermeable. Then it seems to me like a bulletproof good idea. And I understand that we have all these past rules and laws and stuff that long preceded me about procedures, but I'm trying to think ahead as to what's best for the town in the long-term future, and I think there's a way to do that, and I encourage us to look for.
Okay, to the applicant, can you make sure that if you have any letters or anything from the abuddies, that you get them into our office?
Sure.
Does anyone else have any comments on this particular article?
No, one quick question to Ms. Cabral. Do you, did you get all the abuddies? Did you get something from all the abuddies that abut the property?
With all this COVID-nineteen, we didn't want to get close. We had done a document a few months back with a bunch of signatures, with everyone who was in favor, and then recently, we just started going to, you know, get these letters. But with everything that's going on, being homebound, to be honest, we haven't.
But I mean, you could, you could, you-
We had a few people-
You could, you could mail them by snail mail, I guess, and ask them to back to you. That would suggest that you do that, get all the abuddies, which you can get from the town, the abuddies list, okay? And just send them a, a letter and a self-stamped address, and ask them to get that back to you, and then you could send that to Christine. You could get those and, you know, drop them off or send them to Christine.
I believe the signatures had twenty-six, which would be probably both, both streets that we did.
Okay.
I mean, we didn't have any, any negative feedback at all. Fifteen years, everyone knows we're not for, we like the country setting. We don't like all the big businesses. They know what we want to do. Just us, our personality. I don't like all the traffic and everything. We're not looking for a big business. So everyone had no problem signing it. But I think, believe there was twenty-six signatures on there, which is both streets.
Yeah, I have, I have the signature page in front of me here with the application that you submitted to the select board initially.
Yes.
If there's anything else that you can send me, just to back up in the file, then that would be good. It's C O Grady, C O G R A D Y, at town.dartmouth.m a.us. The planning board-
What more could I give you?
I'm sorry, what?
What, what could I give you more?
So, well, I have the letters from today, but if you have anything else in support, you could also give me the, a copy of the deed would be good.
The easement.
The E, I'm sorry, the easement is what I meant to say.
Well, you should get a copy of the deed too.
Okay. Anything you have that can support you, you know, that can provide backup and support is always, you know, a positive. is always, you know, a positive.
If I can, if I can interject real quick too, if 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 this would be something that would move forward, as Steve said, you know, with with some kind of a restrictive covenant, I can start working on drafting one with your town council, I'm not sure who that is at this point, and that would be, you know, something that would make you guys happy. I mean, you know, we can start working on that if, again, if it's something that would be conditional for this rezone.
Well, again, you can bring it before town meeting regardless, you as the citizen's petition. We do ultimately need to have, it'll be a voter petition that evening, so we'll have to have somebody get up and sponsor it. I can give you, I will, I will provide Joe with the town council's name so that you can reach out to them via email. I don't believe, I don't know if I have your email or not, John.
Cutino.
Yeah. If I have your email or if I don't have your email on anything up till now, but, you know, we can make make arrangements to make sure that, you know, you have an opportunity to work with them, you can bring it forward regardless. Obviously, it helps if you have planning board support. If you don't have planning board support, then it becomes more difficult to defend at town meeting. I guess town, the the planning board will make a, they will make a recommendation tonight. They'll be going before the finance committee on Thursday night via another Zoom. I don't have that that, I don't have that meeting ID yet, that's coming from the finance committee, but another board support that you would be looking for would be the finance committee ultimately. So the planning board has to bring forth their recommendations for Thursday night. And then you'll also have an opportunity, I guess, if you wanted to bring it before the select board. I don't know their exact meeting schedule at this point, but.
Okay.
Loriann, may I make one last comment?
Go ahead.
I would just like to ask all of you, my colleagues, to consider that if we do this right, this could be a really good precedent to set, because the way I look at it in simple terms is a solar farm in the middle of nowhere situated over a permeable surface is a really good thing for 38 acres. And a lot of the other choices for 38 acres are a very bad thing for the town. So if we can figure out a way to do this wisely and set some ground rules so that other people get the message, this would be a huge step forward. And so we ought to think positively about it, and I appreciate the landowners bringing it in front of us, trying to do the right thing for her abutters and not the wrong thing. So let's try to think creatively about how to do this, but also to set a precedent that will be really good for the town going forward.
Anyone else have any other comments? Okay, you want to move on to the next one? Christine, do you feel we have to vote on this one tonight?
I I thought at the public hearing, unless you're going to continue the public hearing, you have to vote on all of them tonight.
Okay, um, okay, let's move on to the next one then.
Okay, so the the last one is the expansive certain recreational marijuana operations into the general business district. So again, that's the same general business district area that I just showed you, and basically, this one is being brought forth by the select board to see if the town will vote to change the title of Article 4 of the zoning bylaw to marijuana establishments and change the title of Section 4.2 to applicability, from applicability to marijuana establishments overlay districts, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. So basically, they're going to change the the title of the article in general, and then they're going to change the the title of 4.2 from applicability to marijuana establishments overlay district. And to further amend Section 375-4.3 of the zoning bylaw by adding the phrase "or the general business district" to the end of the second sentence thereof. The next thing is to further amend Section 4.3 of the zoning bylaw by adding the following language after the conclusion of the second sentence. And that's that sentence that they will be adding says marijuana cultivators and marijuana products manufacturers, as those terms are defined in 935 CMR 500.002 or any successor regulation there too, are the only types of marijuana establishments that may be granted a special permit or to operate in the general business district. No other types of marijuana establishments, including marijuana retailers, as that term is defined in Section 9.3, 935 CMR 500.002 or any successor regulation there too, are permitted in the general business district. So basically, this means that obviously they'll be adding, they're proposing to add cultivation and manufacturing to that existing general business district along state road.
Is there anyone here that's going to be speaking in favor of it from the Board of Selectmen?
I don't see any.
At their meeting.
Yeah, I don't see anybody from the Board of Selectmen on here. There are some other people, again, I'm not sure if they're from the finance committee or if they're just general members of the of the public.
Does anyone in the general public want to make comments on this article?
I know all of the microphones aren't open, but if you send me a chat, I'll have your microphone opened. Okay, so I'm not receiving anything on that in.
Okay, anything from the planning board members?
Yes, so I'm disappointed we don't have a sponsor here, someone who's sponsoring this article with some further explanation. We know, Christine, do we know what what is different about this article versus the one that was proposed last year?
Well, this is being brought by the by the select board. They worked with town council Brian Cruz on it.
My question is, essentially, what was brought last year was to allow this type of operation in the general business district. That was a citizen's petition. But now we have a petition from the zoning, I mean, from the select board. From what I'm seeing, essentially asking for the same thing, it may be, you know, slightly different language and diffusal, but in the end, will they're proposing to have that type of operation in the same district that we voted on last year, am I correct?
Well, I obviously can't speak for the select board or for their their thought process in in developing this, it appears to.
I'm not asking you, but I it is the same.
I mean, it appears to be that they're going to, that they're still looking to do cultivation and manufacturing in the general business district. Again, it isn't a citizen's petition in this case, so that is that is different. They are.
Select board member John Lerns asking to talk, so.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Okay. Hold on one sec, let me just.
Probably looking for your name.
Should be able to talk now.
John or Jamie, are you on?
Or Janine, hang on.
Janine?
Yes, thank you. The select board voted 5-0 in favor of this article. Language is a little different, that we have to remember that the town can only have one grow and processing facility. The area in town that was allotted for this issue in the past doesn't seem to fit it right now, and we were looking to expand the area and have the planning board put some strict restrictions on it. And it would be with the planning board's blessings that it would go forward, because you would be putting the, would be listening through public hearings to the residents and to the neighbors of any piece of property that was chosen to be used and call it covenants or whatever, you would be putting restrictions on that property. So it wouldn't be just, they can put it anywhere with no restrictions.
So John, I'm not following you, because that's not in the proposal that we could put restrictions on it. Under the current overlay district, that's a special permit process, so I'm not so sure. Is it same, is this the same process here that it's still a special permit and they would have to meet all the guidelines that currently exist in our overlay district?
Yes.
So Christine, would you agree with that? I don't, I all I have.
Yeah, there isn't much, I mean, they're not, unless there comes another amendment later on, like there was a floor amendment last time, you have still all the same controls that you had before.
So it would be a special permit, the the setback from residents and schools and everything still all exist.
Right.
And John, you said only one is allowed per the state guidelines right now?
Right, he's correct with that. One cultivation, one manufacturing. Sometimes they're combined.
And we have, we could have, what, three or four retail, I believe it is?
Three.
Three retail, one grow, one manufacturer, and that's it?
Yes.
All right, that clarifies a lot.
Could I ask a question, John? Did, they were going for a variance, and that was continued till April 7th.
Yes.
Did they get their variance?
I have no idea.
Well, that's my question, if they got the variance, why do we need to change the zone?
Well, I'm sorry, I I don't know if they had it, the planning, the zoning board of appeals had their meeting on this issue.
One of the reasons, one of the reasons to change the zoning, Margaret, would be to make them conforming and not conforming. And John, wasn't this really brought back to town meeting? Because didn't town meeting say to bring it back without all of the amendments to it at the last town meeting?
That was probably the major reason why it it failed, yes.
If I could interject, if I could interject, at the last town meeting, my memory is pretty clear that it was going to pass overwhelmingly, but for one provision that had nothing to do with a specific project, but rather had to do with one member of the select board wanted to move the planning board out of the process of review, that third amendment went down by town meeting, so the whole thing went down. But this, the original thing was a good idea that everybody was going to approve easily. And it sounds like what's coming back now is an opportunity to do the right thing a second time.
Steve, that's not true. It wasn't asked by overwhelming.
Yeah, that that wasn't the problem. The problem was that even the, even the, I had to get up and read this long amendment because town, the town moderators said I had to read it. The town meeting members were adamant that they were too many and that, you know, to bring it back without all, without all these amendments.
But it was amendment number three that was the problem.
Well, it was both. And even if they do get a variance that makes them non-conforming, so if we change the zoning so that they become conforming, then they, it's easy, it's much better for the town in the long, long haul to have everything conforming and not conforming instead of not conforming. Those are my understandings of why the selectman would would bring it forward. John, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, the reason, the reason why I I want to bring it forward is because of the the financial aspect of the issue.
Correct.
And other towns are doing it, we only have one, you have to remember, we only have one, and we only have one shot at the, shot at this issue, because other towns could put one in, there may not be the need of it in the future. And also, and you'll have to notice one thing, the federal government hasn't put their hands on any revenue out of this, these issues so far. So our future revenues could be a lot less if the federal government decides to step in in the future. And if my memory serves me correctly, last spring, the, it was about 300 and something thousand dollars the first year and $540,000 plus in future years. I think John's point is very valid. It's financially very significant for the town that we do this sooner rather than later and not get in our own way about it.
There's also another issue. The the state said we have one license to give. If we are obstructionist, we can be sued over this issue. And they could probably, maybe someone could bring a suit against the town for not having parcels big enough or an area that would, that it would fit, I'm not sure, but, you know, we could get sued if we are obstructionist going forward.
We can be sued for anything at any time by anyone.
Kevin, true.
Yes.
Thank you.
The thing, the thing I find amazing was I went and I, I pulled the records of the voting, beat the voting, when we voted for the marijuana, and the thing I found interesting was, one, two, and three precincts, one, two, and three overwhelmingly voted for marijuana. And that's where this would be, this would be in those precincts. I just found that amazing.
I can tell you that since all of this has been going on, that the ZBA has not met, so nothing would have happened with regard to the variance for the outstanding application. They're not going to be meeting again until May as it stands right now. So I don't know how the timing of that is going to play out, obviously, with all of this.
Thank you, Christine.
Let me ask, John, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So the, do you know if, so there's a variance process that's going in parallel with this process. So if they're granted a variance, I think we all can assume that that's our one manufacturer that's, and grower, that's allowed.
Correct.
That would, were to get a variance. If that would have happened before June town meeting, will the select board withdraw the article?
Well, I'm only one voice, so I really can't answer that question tonight. Would I, would I personally, I personally would not.
Why not?
It's better to have a two-pronged attack on some issue than just.
No, no, if if the variance is granted before June.
Well, you also know there's a variance process. Should someone appeal the variance, it could stall or could, so, so I would say, I would still like to have the two-pronged going forward.
I don't disagree with you, but let's say hypothetically that May 1st, they did get a variance.
Yeah.
Now, the 20 days is May 20th. Town meeting is not till June 2nd. So my question is, will the select board, under that scenario, you think, would you as a select board member withdraw the article?
If the appeal process had, time had lapsed, I probably would say yes, yes.
Right. As we achieve what you're trying to achieve, which is the financial benefit, can't get better if it does go to town meeting, because you're only allowed one.
Correct.
Yep, yep, okay, I'm just, who knows if that's the way it's going to play out, but I'm just asking the question.
Yes.
John, there would be another reason why I would rather pass zoning. A variance goes with the land, which means they could forever, ever, 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 ever have a manufacturing there, whereas if it's zoned and these people pull out, then new people would have to apply and we would get the second bite of the apple to make sure that they're conforming to the bylaws.
I I don't disagree with you, Laurie, but we may not have a choice if they're going to, they're taking two paths here. Well, they're not taking back. The applicant is is to go in the variance room. They may get a variance May 1st.
Right, right, but if they, you're right, I would, but I personally would rather see it zoned than variance.
I don't disagree with you, but, you know, they may get a variance.
Right.
But John, if they, if they get the variance and we zone it, wouldn't that just make the variance obsolete?
No, no.
The variance would stick.
Goes with the land, yes.
Variance always goes.
We wish to give that up, because zoning could change five years from now.
Right.
And and they've got a variance.
Right, the the variance is forever.
Right.
There's also one other, one other aspect of this deal. The town, I think it's a, I think it's a five-year term, if I'm correct, but every five years, it comes back to the town where the town renegotiates, which is great. So as Laurie said, if something's not working out.
But John, wasn't it my understanding, because I happened to be at that meeting for the variance, wasn't it my understanding that they were not going to get up and running for about 18 months?
wasn't it my understanding that they were not going to get up and running for about 18 months? So I would imagine if they're not up and running in 18 months, they're not going to stop paying the town.
But they, but they also said they would be up and running before anyone is putting a shovel in the ground because they have a building and a structure already in place. They said they could be running earlier.
Right, but they're still not going to be running for about 18.
That is correct. They said 12 to 18.
The town would get no money for 18 months.
That's correct. I wouldn't say 18, but I would say a year.
At least the tax revenue on the property and the building, that's what.
Yeah, we'll get that tax revenue.
Right, yeah.
But it would be taxed, but it would be taxed at a higher rate.
It all depends on what's else for.
That's why he said the 380 versus the 540 in year one and two, but it was, those numbers were accounted for in the prior proposal.
Yes.
I don't remember that. You and John Caesar were not part of the, of the vote.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So that's why you don't remember it.
That's why I don't remember. Thank you, Christine.
I'm trying to help you out.
John Huran, do you have any other questions of us?
No, no. I, I have faith in the planning board, you know that. As, as a former member, I, I agree that, you know, you can work with the, the process.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience have any questions or comment?
Um, we do have, we do have another comment. No, it was just a question, never mind. It was a question regarding.
I think I saw that question.
Is.
Yeah, the last article.
The last article, yes.
I saw that pop up.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments from the town, the planning board members?
I'd, I'd like to move that we go forward with this. I, I think it's a good idea.
I make the motion to close the public hearing.
I can.
Everyone comfortable in closing the public hearing? They have all the information they want?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Kevin, second.
Okay, so John Caesar moved, Kevin Santos seconded. We'll take the roll call vote.
Kevin Mello.
Now, what are we voting? Are we voting on?
I'm Steve Mello, I'm Kevin Santos.
Voting to close the public meeting? They're voting, voting for the public hearing. Okay, yes, I vote. Margaret? Yes, John?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Laurie, yes. Motion carries unanimously to close the public hearing. Are we ready this evening to vote on these issues?
So the question that you do have from the, the article D, the citizen's petition, is whether or not we should keep that one open and get more information and have them work with town council or, so I don't know if you want to start voting when you get to that one, make a decision, or if you want to.
Point of order, clarification there. Once we close the public hearing, we can't gather any new information.
Well, so that was the question that was brought up. That's, that was the question that I was asking Laurie. I mean, again, because of this chat thing is a little bit different here.
Right, that was the question I asked, if we needed to vote on all these articles at the same time and.
No, but Laurie, if you recall, you know, the, the process is, is that we conduct a public hearing where it's a fact-finding mission for the planning board. Once we feel we've gathered enough facts, we close the public hearing. That process has been done. I personally made the move, I don't think anything's going to change between now and town meeting. Regarding Article D, this very subject that I had concerns about came up, you know, a month or two ago when they were for us. I had a concern, you know, what is your plan on, on that? They came forward with nothing this evening, totally unprepared to address that issue again. So I don't see we have enough time. And, and, and to the applicant's point, I don't know if anybody caught that. They said, well, we'll submit something to town council for, for him to work with us. Town, it's not, it's not town council's job to write the covenant of the deed restriction.
No, they're asking, they're asking to work with town council and that probably should have been said during this point. I don't know.
I'm, I'm just pointing all this information out.
Right, so I, I mean.
The public hearing has been closed, so we can't.
But obviously, we're, we're all new to this and I had, I had just said that there was a question via the chat. So I, I was misunderstanding on whether or not we could, we could move forward with this. So I don't know if you want to close the public hearing for each article and then, and go through that way. I mean, I, this person had brought up the question to us prior to you closing the public hearing. So I'm asking what to do with it now. They asked the question, are you going to just vote? You want to leave it closed? You want to?
We've, we've already voted.
But did you know that they had this specific question?
Yes, I mean, that came up at the, at the public hearing.
Okay, okay, as long as you're comfortable with it, I mean.
Yeah, no, I, I, you know, I, I don't see it getting resolved. I don't think there's enough time between now and town meeting for this to go back and forth between the applicant and town council and then come back before us to feel comfortable. I, I, there's just not enough time to do that. We've got to make a recommendation. What's the date we have to make the recommendation to town meeting?
You're supposed to be making the recommendations now. Okay, so you're going to go through each, you're going to go through each article and, and vote individually?
For each article.
The deadline is today.
Okay.
Well, we have, you are going before finance committee on Thursday night.
Right, so we have to, we have to make a recommendation. We can't wait for any more information. We, we, we've got a timeline that we have to adhere to.
Okay, so do you want to go through?
Article. I'm back on, my thing keeps going now. Let's do each articles, we have to do each article separately. So to do Article A, aquifer protection. How does the board want to vote on the aquifer protection, Article A? Can you hear me?
I make a motion, I'd make a motion to go forward with and accept that the way it's written.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Margaret and a second by Kevin. Any comments or questions from the board? A roll call vote, Margaret?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Laurie, yes. The motion carries unanimously to move this and sponsor this at town meeting. Article B, the floodplain bylaw and map. Any questions or comments from the board? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the second motion. I mean, I'll make a motion to accept this the way it's written and bring it forward to town meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Margaret and a second by Kevin to approve and sponsor floodplain article to town meeting. Roll call, Margaret? Yes. John?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Laurie, yes. Motion carries unanimously to forward and sponsor this town meeting. Article C, amendment to the signed bylaw.
So now, please remember with this one that the town administrator had asked you whether or not this needs to go forward at this time, just something to remember. I, I don't understand why we can't. I mean, it's a small, it's not a big thing.
Why don't we?
Say a go-through.
Yeah, can we move it and then always pull it for the, and then put, bring it forward to the next one?
I, Laurie, I mean, that's, I don't know what the protocol, if the administrator can pull it. We've got a, we've got a, a hold, I believe. We, we told him these articles were coming. I, I understand what he's trying to accomplish. I don't think this is a controversial article. It's going to consume a lot of time. I don't see any need to postpone this. If anything, you know, Article E is going to consume a lot of time. But because there's a benefit, I understand moving forward with that. But this Article C is, you know.
I know.
I don't see why we need to postpone it.
Right.
So hopefully, he doesn't make that decision. Or if he does, he, he asks his input on whether to postpone it or not.
Yeah, my suggestion would be to, to vote to send it. That would be my suggestion.
Yep.
And then if they pull it, that's, they have to come to us.
So anyway.
I need a motion.
I'm going to make that motion to send Article C to town meeting as it written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Margaret, seconded by Kevin, to, to sponsor the, the fine bylaw article at town meeting. Roll call, vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Laurie, yes. Motion carries unanimously to move it forward to town meeting. Article D, citizens' petition.
There was one more comment. I know that the public hearing is closed, but there are some concerns with, with regard to the format. It's very difficult for the citizens in the council to interact and have the conversation throughout this. So they have brought that forward. They didn't want to interrupt and they weren't sure how to maintain, maintaining the decorum. So I've told them that I would, I would bring this concern forward to you. I don't know if there's.
What is the concern, Christine? The specific concern?
Well, Madam Chair.
Yes.
You know, I.
I know, I know.
I'm sympathetic to the, to the applicant, but the process, Madam Chair, as you know, is the public hearing has been closed. If we allow additional information, for whatever reasons, some confusions, the public hearing's been closed. People that were interested in this article may have already left the meeting and now we're going to hear further information. We can't do that. We're, we're, we're violating the law if we allow new information into this public hearing now because we've closed the public hearing. People may have left and wanted a comment. So we've got to be careful what we're doing here.
So the, the citizen's petition will still go forward regardless of whether or not the planning board?
Correct, correct, correct.
Correct.
To address.
The petition will go forward. Okay, the petition will go forward regardless of how we vote. And if the petition wants to bring any new information, he can bring that to town meeting without a problem.
Correct, correct.
He can bring all the information and all the paperwork he wants to, if he gets it to, to the town clerk in a timely fashion, to be put in the packet. And he can get it all to town meeting. And when he gets up and speaks at town meeting, he can say all the information he wants.
So why don't we go ahead and vote what we think as of right now, based on what we heard during the public meeting?
Well, that's, that's what we have to do.
We have no choice.
Okay.
Okay, so we, the, okay, so we're discussing the citizen's petition.
Article D.
Any other comments or questions?
Just, just comments. I'm not comfortable with this article as proposed for reasons stated prior to. And the board should be aware that, you know, and I agree with Steve, but there's a lot of good reasons for a solar farm here to generate revenue. But if this article passed, we're forever changing the zoning in a, from residential to general business. There was a lot of input on the access to this property and we heard that there's access through an EverSource property and there's access of Ellsworth and Hillcrest Street to this property. To my knowledge, both those streets are through residential areas. And I cannot envision that we, the access on crossroads through the EverSource substation and transmission lines that are there, that EverSource will ever allow a large development to be accessed through that property. It's, in my opinion, it's just not going to happen. Now, a right to repass and pass for a solar farm, maybe, but we're not voting on a solar farm here, folks. We're changing the zoning. We're changing this to general business. That means a box store. In my opinion, that's worst-case scenario, let's say. The most intense use for that general business is a box store. EverSource, in my opinion, is never going to allow access to that box store over their property. So the developers' options are Hillcrest and Ellsworth Street. And that's not a good thing for the town. You know, as Steve points, yeah, a good thing for the town is not to have another cul-de-sac. A good thing to the town is to have money driving a, a solar farm. But a bad thing for the town is the solar farm failed in one or two years or even 20 years. 20 years is not a long time. I hope I'm still here in 20 years. And 20 years or whatever it may be, we've got a box store and now we've got all this traffic going down Hillcrest or Ellsworth Street. We don't have the infrastructure. It's not fair to the residential zone to, to do that, but they have the right to do that. Once this is changed, it's open. You know, we've done the damage. They have the right to go down Ellsworth or Hillcrest Street and access their property. And yet the town does not have it. So that's a bad thing. Yeah, we may get a box there, it's going to generate some revenue, but then we've got to rest hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe millions, for the proper infrastructure for that development. That is no cost to the developer. It's all burden on the town. So that scares me. So for those reasons, I don't think this specific site is a good reason to change this at this time. Unless we, you know, if I saw some really good guarantees that this couldn't happen, but that didn't come forth this evening with deed restrictions or covenants. So that's my rationale for not supporting the, at this time.
Anyone else have any comments?
Yes, Ms. Chair. I am not going to vote on this out of fear. You know, fear that it could become a neighborhood, fear that it could become anything. What we have before us, as John said, yes, their intent is a solar farm. And if we can put something in writing that will guarantee that if it stops being a solar farm, it reverts back, then that's all that I would, that, that's what it would take to get me to be in favor of this. In theory, I'm very much in favor of it. But I, too, too often, we vote saying, oh, that's a great idea. And it comes back to bite us in the ass later on down the road. I know I haven't been here near as long as anyone else, but I have learned that in the, the time I've been here. And until there's some assurances that this could be nothing more than a solar farm or revert back, I, I need to proceed with caution and say no.
Madam Chair, could I ask a question of you? And I understand what Kevin is asking about revert back, but we, it can't revert back, right? It just can't revert back unless it goes, well, it can't, it can't revert back, period. Once it's a general business, how can, how can it revert back?
Margaret, can you start over? I got disconnected again.
Okay, Madam Chair, how could, you know, I understand what Kevin's saying and I agree with him, but once we zone that general business, it can't revert back.
No, the only way it can be back is if it goes back to town meeting, the zoning is changed.
Right, so we, it can't, because it can't get a special, it can't get a variance, right? Because is it a single residence B out there? No, it's general residence. Oh, you, they want to go to general residence, general business. Yeah, but what is it now, Christine, general residence? A, a residence B. It's a residence B, okay. So they can't, they have to go back, they have to come back before us? It's a residence B, okay. So they can't, uh, they have to go back, they have to come back before us and have to come. So that's the only way, Kevin, that it can revert back.
Single residence.
Oh, yes, I, I guess, uh, with that being said, no, my, my opinion is no.
Okay.
So, I mean.
Well, my only concern with this, and I think, uh, solar farm is great, but my only concern with this is that, uh, the, everybody talks big box stores, but is, does that land actually abut any place like Walmart? Is that, you know, does that land go all the way back towards, towards, uh, that property?
It, it doesn't need to.
It does.
I, I'm just wondering what's in front, uh, on six, okay, the general business zone. What that is that would go all the way back? That's, that's just a question, okay? I was just wondering.
It abuts the, um.
The nursing home.
Housing, did they, uh, I forgot the name of.
The Dow or?
Oh, right, it, it abuts that, but does it, it goes, doesn't it go right to Route Six, too?
No, it goes that, as the applicant said, it goes to Hillcrest and Ellsworth.
No, I know, but I mean, that, there, I'm wondering what on Route Six would abut that, that land. What, what is on Route Six?
I think the closest thing would be Walmart.
That's what I said. I thought it was Walmart that would.
It'd be quite some difference. It's, it's, it's.
Right.
From Walmart, but the closest thing would be Walmart.
But I thought, okay.
You don't know 15, 20 down the road. From the town as far as, you know, new commercial growth, uh, that, that may be very attractive for someone to go back there and put something. Uh, and, and again, my concern is now, uh, Ellsworth and Hillcrest is owned by the town. And it's our responsibility to upgrade that. And in the meantime, you know, those people are gonna put up all of this traffic for something that was zoned. For that purpose, that we can't stop. You know, we, it's by right. Once we, once we make this change, it's by right. They can, and I say worst-case scenario, that's probably not gonna happen in five or 10 years, but who knows what may happen? It's by right. They can do whatever they want back there, as long as it meets their criteria for general business. Kinda scary going down a residential, those two residential streets, in my opinion.
And that's, um, it's kinda why, when I was on the ZBA, and to this day, I still hate the fact that the town cannot allow a use variance in residence areas. I think if any zoning should change, that we should change that and revert it back.
I agree, Kevin. I agree. I think that's a big mistake that we made.
I, I agree with Kevin, too, and I wasn't around to have even understood that mistake at the time it was made. But what's obvious to me tonight is that we've got a really good idea in front of us. And we're having trouble approving it because of the precedent that we might set, because we don't have the covenants that we need. And it, and so the real problem is with our rules and our, we're twisted in our knickers by the past rules. There's not much question that this particular project is a good idea if we could simply approve it and guarantee that it would stay that way. So we need to spend more time planning and make sure that we can change these kind of rules for the future, so that this stuff doesn't come back and bite us again. I totally understand what John and Kevin are saying, but I think it's a shame that we've got ourselves twisted into this situation. Because this is a good idea for the town. We ought to.
Right, Steve, I, I don't disagree with it. When we plan, we can't plan for a, a specific project. Because it is a good idea if we can get solar funded, but we got no guarantees that it's gonna be built. We got no guarantees that it will remain, uh, a solar farm if it is built. Uh, and to Kevin's point that the, the, it can always go back to residential. But there's no guarantee town meeting is gonna pass that. So the, the restriction on, uh, a zoning change, you can't go into, town meeting adopted a bylaw a few years ago, that you can't make as, uh, uh, a variance in residential areas when it comes to use change. But you can go the other way. There's nothing to stop and, from general business going to residential. There's not a restriction on that, but there's no guarantee that that's gonna happen. The applicant can't tell us that that's gonna happen. Because we don't know what town meeting may do in two years, 20 years, or whenever that scenario may come up. We, we can't, we can't impose that, because we don't know what town meeting will do. But there's nothing preventing that scenario from happening. It can go back, uh, but it's gotta go back.
So John, the, the only last comment that I would make is to repeat something I said earlier, which is, there's a situation here with the lesser of the evils. The worst thing we could do is to have any idea in the future that this becomes a cul-de-sac and single-family homes and out of 38 acres. That's the worst thing for the entire town of 35,000 people. There's a few abutters who will be hurt if it becomes a Walmart or a big box store.
Steve, we gotta, we gotta, also, we gotta get away, you know, that may be the worst thing for the town as financial.
Financial, financial.
But that's not the worst thing for your grandson and granddaughters to have a future house to be built in Dartmouth. That's a good thing. It may not be a good thing financially, but for future generations to have the op- opportunity to build in hot, in Dartmouth is a good thing. So, you know, be careful what you're saying there, because I agree with you and I don't agree with you. Uh, it's a very bad thing.
This is something we should really talk about in the coming 10-year plan, because I hear what you're saying. And it's only good for our grandkids and so forth if it's a town that's the town that we know today. If it's a town that's overrun by suburban sprawl, it's not a good thing. But that's something for the 10-year plan. I agree with what you're saying sentimentally. And I'm not looking for it to become more expensive, but we don't wanna make the town fundamentally worse. So those are things we gotta think about in order.
Right, I agree.
Can I offer a couple of clarifications before you all take your vote or continue? Um, I think there's gonna be a couple of corrections here. First of all, Walmart is, um, closer towards the crossroad, um, intersection there, uh, over to the, the right on the map that I had shown you initially. The parcel does not abut Hillcrest, Hillcrest or Ellsworth at all. Ever-source would not allow, um, box store. The, the applicant had said that time and time again, at, um, as. Ever-source would not allow a box store across their property. Um, they had said that to access this, um, location. So those are some things to keep in, to keep in mind going forward. There is no frontage on this particular property on Route, uh, State Road or Route Six. So visibility is something to consider as well. Um, if you're thinking big box store, they, they usually want visibility.
Christine, how do you know that, how do you know that Ever Source will not allow a box store?
Because the applicant had told you that earlier? Um, they will not allow access across, I mean.
How, how do we know that?
I, I'm just going by what the applicant had told you.
Okay.
Uh, so, if anything else, I'm looking at the map here. I have the map in front of me. I'm working from the map.
No, I know you. I appreciate you with your.
Yeah.
Christine, the applicant said their second access point would be Hillcrest and Ellsworth. And they showed us the map that I think they said, if I'm not mistaken, there's parcel in between that they control. So that's not, they showed us quite a distance. Uh, so that would be a very expensive access point to do, and they didn't wanna do that. They'd rather go through the ever-source possible. And understood, I, you know, as a developer, you wanna go to your shortest point. So again, if we change this, uh, you know, access could be, as the developer said, through Ellsworth and Hillcrest Street. Uh, through that other parcel. Uh, it doesn't.
It just needs to be clear that it's not, they don't abut. It, maybe they control the other parcel, but they do not abut the other parcel.
Oh, when they showed the map, it did abut. On, on, on their diagram, they, they showed us, uh, there was a parcel.
Here, so I can't really, this is the document that they had provided.
Yeah, uh.
Yes, that, that little bit down at the bottom, the lower, the lower left side, connected to their other parcel.
Right.
Right.
It's not the same as abutting those other two properties. They can make the connect, they can make the connection, like you said.
I mean, that, that section, maybe it's 100 feet, 100 yards, that they, that abuts directly, abuts the other property. It, you know, not 100%, but that portion abuts it.
It abuts the other property, but does not abut the, about the street. They can maybe petition to, to expand, to extend the street, or they.
They could simply do an 81X and erase that property line, connect those two large parcels into one. And then they have direct access to Hillcrest in, in the other one.
Right, and they have the right to develop a street on there. We can't stop them. We, you know, they can, they can extend Hillcrest or Ellsworth through that second parcel. They have the right to do that under current zoning, and we can't stop that process. Uh, and they should have the right, but that's what we gotta be concerned about here. We're not building a solar farm. We're changing a parcel to general business forever. Uh, that could have some real implications to that neighborhood there.
But another point you might make, John, is that the, the solar developer is not a dummy either. And they could very likely have language in their contract that makes sure that they get the better part of the 20 years, not the two to three years. And I think that if, for a lot of different reasons, we could approve this and give ourselves the opportunity as a town to get it sorted out within 20 years.
Oh, Steve, I don't disagree with that. The, the solar farm is guaranteed that they're gonna get 20 years if they're successful. But if solar farm, for whatever reason, uh, fails, because of tax credits or the technology is much different, they're gonna simply walk away and close the solar farm down, and it's gonna become another use. So, uh, yeah, they may have to pay the lease for 20 years, but they can certainly walk away from the use. Uh, so there's no guarantee.
I hear you, John. Absolutely. There's no guarantee, but I'd rather take that risk than the risk of bulldozers making cul-de-sacs there. So it's just, it's a trade-off of risks.
That the technology in solar is changing so much that possibly within five to 10 years, everybody's roof shingle will be solar shingles, and they're not gonna need solar.
These solar farms are more efficient than everybody's roof, because everybody's roof points one way. And these things can rotate and tilt and point the right way. I would bet on this kind of a solar farm versus the other, but again.
And I would, I would vote on this in a heartbeat, as long as we have some assurance that if the solar farm does fail, that this cannot be, we're saying box stores. It doesn't have to be a box store.
No, it could be any, I agree with you, Kevin. I, I totally want the same, I want the same covenant you want. We don't disagree on that at all. I would love to.
You know, to me, a deed restriction would solve this for me.
Me, too.
Yeah, and there would seem to be some reluctance to, to go that route.
Can we vote on it with a deed restriction as a, as a, as a caveat?
No.
That's.
Not unless that's presented before us as an offer.
I'll make a motion that the, uh, planning board do not recommend Article D.
And I will second that.
We have a motion on the floor, made by John, seconded by Kevin, to not recommend this article to town meeting. Roll call, vote, Margaret.
Uh, I'll have to go with them, because I understand the, the situation, and it's, uh, unfortunate.
John?
Yes, reluctantly, uh, I gotta vote, uh, not to, as much as I'd like to see a solar farm there.
Stephen?
Reluctantly, I have to, I have to vote, uh, no. I, I'd like to see us do this, so I have to disagree.
You're voting no to, to not sponsor it?
I'm voting the double negative. I wanna, I want us to support it.
He wants us.
Doing that, so I'm voting.
Want us to support it, so you have to vote yes?
No, no, no. The motion, do not recommend.
The, the.
We don't recommend. I wanna recommend, so I'm voting no to John's motion.
Steve's correct.
Okay, correct. Um, Kevin?
I am voting, uh, yes to not recommend this.
Lori is voting. Yes. So the motion is four to one, not to recommend to town meeting. Now, my next question on this is the right up to town meeting, before we go to Article E. What about the right up to town meeting, that, how we're not gonna recommend it? Do you wanna put a caveat in there that we felt that it was a good site for solar, but we can't, but we're not getting any bill guarantees or something like that? How does the board feel about that?
I would move that we put in such a statement, yes, I'll help you draft it.
I'm not drafting it. Your town, town, uh, town planner is. John, how do you feel about that?
You know, that was, you know, one of the big reasons, but what I'm afraid of is that, uh, if, if we make that a motion, uh, that the developer does come forward with some kind of language, uh, we don't have any time to review that. We can't review that, uh, and say, so.
No, what I'm saying is that the planning board voted four to one not to sponsor and give the reasons that because we had no guarantees that it was going to be a solar farm.
And that means we could review it, John, before the following town meeting. We, you're right, we don't have the time before this one, but we could review it again if it came back.
But I don't wanna give town meeting the impressions that we're okay if the developer comes forth with some kind of covenant, a language, that we have no idea. Town council has, doesn't have time to review it to make sure all our guarantees that we're looking for.
No, but we would have time before the next town meeting. We would have months and months to review it.
No, I'm talking about this town meeting, that they.
Agree. We can't review it before this town meeting, but we could easily review it in the future.
Okay, so we just send, okay, I mean, we have to give a reason for denying it. That's what my, my thing is. Okay, we'll figure that out after.
Again, we're looking at not a solar farm here. You know, the proposal is to change it to general business, Lori, as you've said, on a few other. We better put the solar farm aside when it comes to the discussion of town meeting. That we keep making that mistake as a town, not the planning board, but that happened with, uh, the apartment, oh, a couple of years ago. So we've gotta, we've gotta divide ourselves from that. What's before us?
But, but John, we need to explain it the way Lori says. We don't want people to think that we're against a positive idea like a solar farm. So we do need to explain it in clear language.
Well, no, I, John's right. We are strictly talking about a zoning change. And we are not supposed to be talking about any.
We're talking about a zoning change, about a zoning rule that is flawed to begin with. So we really should explain it in clear language about why we feel that way.
The zoning is not flawed. And I think that when the, the applicant goes before the town meeting, the applicant should explain why we voted against it, because I'm sure Mr. Patino and Mrs. Cabral, they're listening.
I hope they are.
And then they will.
Yes.
And then they will ask Lori Miller at town meeting if this was the reason why. Am I right, Lori?
Um, I don't know if they have the right to ask me or not, but they can. Yes.
They can ask, yeah. Yeah. Okay, so the, uh, the motion carries four to one, not to recommend to town meeting. Okay, Article E. The Board of Selectmen's article. Questions, comments?
I'll stop, because I didn't vote on this last time, because I recuse myself. So I'm, I'm gonna make a comment, and I am gonna vote on it this time, because it is, I have no issue one way or the other. But my concern here is that this was brought before the town, and this has been brought before the planning board for a particular property. Okay, now that particular property, if it is zoned, uh, if we change the zoning to general business, that particular property is gonna be next to a housing development that is gonna be built, which it will be built. It's a 40B. They will have children there. And it's very close to the hotel, which has children there all the time. They live there. So I don't know how you can say that this will clarify, this, this particular location is not, is, is gonna be okay. And it's gonna go along with what we have now for the marijuana, marijuana bylaws. And that is my feeling on this, and I feel strongly. You're gonna have a development next door with a lot of children, the 40B. And you're gonna have the hotel, and this sits right in the middle.
Again, Margaret, we're looking at a, a zoning change, not a specific site. Even though we all know that there's a specific sighting mine, we're looking at a zoning change. So if this were to pass, they're still gonna have to meet the special permit requirements as far as setbacks from residents, and hotels, or where children congregate, if we feel that children are congregating there. They, they still have to meet those requirements. That doesn't change, uh, but we're allowing it in the whole district. I feel a little bit more comfortable, uh, you know, I wasn't around to vote on it last time, but this, uh, my concern was, is that, here we go again, town meeting already turned this down, and it's the same article. What's different with this one, after hearing from John Iran, is I, I don't think it was explained good enough at town meeting that the town will only see one of these in that entire zone. Uh, the town is only allowed one, uh, in that entire zone. That goes a long way with me, that we're not opening up, even though it can go anywhere in that district. Once one goes in at the, the site we all suspect it may go in, or any other site, that's it. We can't have another one. And this site has to meet all of our, uh, all of our guidelines, all of our restrictions, so, uh, I think this the town as far as, uh, as far as revenue and we're limiting it to one in the town. Go ahead, Margaret.
We have an overlay district on Fons Corner Road. There is ample land on Fons Corner Road.
I don't disagree with that.
So I don't know why we would make it in a general business loan, we have tons of land available. Maybe we don't have the buildings, but we certainly have the land.
I'm not sure we have the land.
We do have the land, Lori, there's lots of.
I know of only two, I know of only two parcels that are big enough.
And, and far enough away from everything else, keep that in mind.
Yes.
That's the caveat.
The other point that I would make, uh, seconding John's inclinations, maybe for different reasons. If you remember the presentation about this site before, this is, this is a cultivation site, it's like Fort Knox. There's nothing that they kids are going to see and run into. It's not like a retail store with a bunch of stoners lined up on the sidewalk trying to buy their latest thing. It's completely different and it's secure and it's the town's only shot, it's financially very positive and it isn't going to hurt anything and the fact that the building may already exist might be the reason that we get it instead of losing it to some other town who does it. I think Selectman Iran's point is pretty valid on this one.
Again, you do have to be careful that we're not talking about one specific site, like.
I understand that, I, I get that point, I'm not, that's not lost on me and I would love nothing better than to redo the zoning rules in a much more fundamental way, but I take your point.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm just saying it to everyone.
Article E. To make a motion, we support Article E.
I'll start.
We have a motion on the floor to support Article E by John and seconded by Stephen. Are we ready for a roll call vote? Margaret?
I'm sorry, I can't support this.
Your vote is no, John?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Lori, yes, the motion carries four to one to support Article E at Town Meeting. Okay, next on the agenda.
So that is all that's on the agenda right now. Um, I will write up the recommendation letters. I have to have something, um, in writing for the Finance Committee for Thursday night. Um, that is your next meeting, if anybody wants to, uh, call in on that one, that one is via Zoom, they're hosting. We have, uh, we're supposed to be on right at 6:30, we'll be talking about that and the budget. I don't have a, a call-in number from them yet, um, again, because they are hosting, the number has to come from that group and the password, so I will get it to you. I know last year Lori and I had attended, um, but you're all welcome to attend. Again, we will be ju- just, just discussing the budget and the, the Town Meeting warrant, the warrant articles that were discussed this evening. Um, that's the window, I, I did speak with them on, two of the members on Monday, um, via a, a Zoom meeting. Um, and we have talked about having a joint meeting with the Planning Board at some point, um, just to discuss some of the economic things, um, to be put into the master plan. So, um, I will be reaching out to them again once we get back on a regular schedule so we can, we can make that happen. Um, that's something that needs to happen. So I will get the, I will get the letters together for them, I will give, I will prepare the letters for the Select Board. So am I strictly giving, just so I'm, I'm correct in understanding, I'm giving strictly your votes on these items and not really giving any, uh, any background as to why the, the article, the, the citizen petition, or am I giving it? Like why that one did not pass?
They may ask you the questions, you certainly can share our discussion with them.
Okay, okay, but I mean, should I put it in the letters, I guess is what I'm asking.
I don't think normally we explain ourselves.
Okay, okay, that's what I'm, I'm asking, just to be clear, yeah.
Christine, is, is there any reason during our joint meeting with them on Thursday, which I look at as more of an opportunity than an obligation, but is there any reason that we can't talk about issues that might come up in the master plan or anything else that's on their mind?
No, we cannot be on there strictly for the budget and strictly for Town Meeting.
Yeah, in preparation for Town.
Why are we limiting ourselves to that?
Because that's how, that's what they do it. That's on the, um, the, the, the town, um, calendar and, and that's been scheduled uh, months in advance and they have numerous groups coming before them, not just our group. So we have a window in which to work. So that's why the other, I agree that, that there does need to be, um, a discussion, but that, that does need.
But if, if they ask a question, we can answer it, right?
Yeah, but they're only going to ask questions about the Planning Board budget, which is level funded, and they're going to ask questions about these five articles.
Okay.
And we will meet with them in the future about other, you know, comments, other questions.
And they were very, they were very agreeable to that when I brought that up to them the other day, so.
I sur-, I hope so and I hope we do it sooner rather than later.
Yeah, we will, in preparation, it is part of the master plan because obviously it makes sense to have their input there than, you know, more so than maybe.
And right now, they're concerned about getting ready for Town Meeting, they have a number of articles they have to go through and then they have the whole budget to go through. So after, after that's all said and done, we'll get to meet with them.
Okay.
Anything else, our next meeting is April 27th.
Um, I don't have a number for that yet, um, so I will get that to you and we just put that on the website. And again, that will be a number and a password, um, as we move forward here.
I have one question, um, that, before we adjourn. You know, I'm fine with downloading everything now, okay? But the thing that I have a real problem with other maps, is there any way that, you know, we can get the maps a little, even if I have to go by Town Hall and pick them up?
Well, I can, I can put them back at the police station if you want to do that.
Okay, just, I just need the maps, but yeah, I can't reach.
No, I know, I know it's difficult, I've got, I've got two computers going here right now, I've got three, you know, I mean, I'm doing GIS on a, on a computer, but, you know. So.
Well, when, when we, when you give us maps or plot plans and all, I really need those at the police station, the rest I don't.
Right, well, normally we also get, you know, um, the paper submissions in addition to the electronic submissions. Right now, we're not having any applicants come to Town Hall, so, I mean, you know, I'm making arrangements to pick things up and drop things off and, you know, it's very awkward because, you know, right now, technically, I'm watching the state of Rhode Island thing and, you know, every time I go over into Massachusetts.
Oh, yeah.
I just have to quarantine, so I can't even, and that's where I do all my shopping, all my, you know, my work, my everything, so.
Did I stop by the state police?
I'm afraid I'm not going to be able to get back across the border. So, you know, we're trying to just make things happen, but I will, I will, um, prior to the next meeting, and like I said, with the, with these two big maps for the, for the zoning, uh, for these, uh, warrant articles, I will get you hard copies of those to look at.
Thank you.
Just so you understand it.
Anyone else have any questions? Christine, are you all set?
I'm all set otherwise, yes, there's a lot.
So our next, our next meeting will be April 27th and I, we are ready to adjourn?
Yeah, just forget, remember the Finance Committee is Thursday night at 6:30.
Right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
Second.
The motion was made to adjourn and Margaret, seconded by Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
I hear ayes from everyone.
Yes.
This meeting has adjourned, good night, everyone, good meeting.
Good night, thank you.